Commissioner of the City of Hodgson and Reno County Commission. I think we know each other.
I don't think we do yet.
Okay.
About the county council.
Yeah, I was gonna introduce Patrick Hoffman, the new county councillor.
Hello.
Hi.
Everybody else, I think, knows each other, so. Randy, you asked whether we should pull something up. Does everybody have the agenda for today? I think in general, the agenda is one item.
One item, and then it has Chief Beer's request, and then a map of the fire districts, the county fire districts, just for reference.
Okay. So certainly appreciate the city being here. I think there's been a longstanding relationship of working together on city and county items, and we want to continue that work, and we appreciate the city initiating this conversation related to how we can work together on an issue that's really important to the community right now. These joint meetings are, you know, I talked to the mayor a little bit on how we should run this. I'll certainly defer to her on the city's side, but she suggested I should at least start the meeting and run it, but certainly, we're gonna make sure everyone gets a chance to talk. I think, as Randy mentioned, the primary item today is to talk through Chief Beer's request on some new equipment, and I asked Chief Beer if he might. I know we've seen his report to you, and I think we all watched the city meeting, so we're a little up to date on some of the positions you have, but Chief, you might just real briefly brief us again on your request, and then maybe we can talk through a little bit about how we want to handle the request and items on the agenda. So Chief, can you real briefly brief us again?
Sure. Over the last three months, or last month, I should say, obviously, you know that Hutch Fire's been involved in four large fires. And the last one here, the Conwood Complex fire, really shed a lot of light on what we were thinking and our approach and our resources. After almost getting two firefighters killed and losing a brush truck in this last battle we were at, that burned up, we took a hard look at how we were doing things, how we were doing business, and the inconsistencies we had with a very young department. So before you have a request for $880,000, which includes three brush trucks at $210,000 apiece, replace our 10-plus-year-old wiring gear. In fact, our gear is in such bad shape as we speak right now, I don't even know how we're gonna make it through the next couple of weeks with some of the stuff that we have. And that's part of the bigger picture, but that's about $100,000 worth of personal protective gear. On top of that, with our existing fleet that we do have, with our good brush trucks, I want the fleet totally standardized, so every individual, from the new person all the way up to the senior firefighter or captain, they're all the same. And when we have inconsistencies with certain brush trucks, have just a bumper nozzle on one does and another one doesn't, and from training all the way to the way we approach the tactical part of it, we run into issues. And so some of the times, some of the resources that one person has, the other ones don't have, and so this would allow everything to be consistent in our entire fleet. And the last part of that is replace some of the damaged tools, equipment, all the miscellaneous stuff that we go through on a daily basis. So that's just put down and dirty what the proposal is.
Mayor, given you've had a chance to deliberate this a little bit, I wonder if you wouldn't mind allowing the county to make some initial comments on the request. Is that okay?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you want to, anybody want to start on the request from the fire chief? Mr. Hurst? Or do you want me to start?
You start.
Okay. So I watched the meeting and appreciated the conversation. I think generally speaking, you know, there's two or more things going on in my mind. One is, I think we have a general understanding of how we split costs today with the county, and we have an agreement in place for that, and so I think it's important to generally honor that agreement when at all possible, and if we feel like that's not fair, I think that's maybe one of the conversations we should address today, is how, if we have agreements that aren't in the best interest of both parties, how we renegotiate those.
On the other hand... Are you being specific to the costs of Fire District Two that the county pays for, and then the city pays for the rest of the fire department?
Yeah, I think in general, I'd like to have this conversation at least start with the relationship we have with Fire District Number Two that the city of Hutch manages, and my understanding, it's a 21-79 split today.
It's based on the taxes and the values, but it's about 22%.
So like, I think that's a good basis to know what we generally have as expectations for our two agencies. On the other hand, I think, given the significance and urgency and, you know, the commitment to be good partners here, like, I personally wouldn't have a problem based on conversations I think staff have had together about splitting the request 50-50, just as a matter of good faith on this one issue, but that doesn't really mean I personally feel like that should be the status quo without a renegotiation of our general agreement. So that's where I would start the conversation. Commissioner Hurst?
Well, with some caveats, I would also look at that 50-50 split with some caveats, and one is the expense involved in this. I think myself, it's too high, after doing some research with myself, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but I think it's my position as a overseer of taxpayers' money to come in and look at different options, as to look at how our taxpayer money is spent. And with bearing in mind that Kansas is a grassland state and not a forestry state, we are a grassland state with a very intense invasive species coming into our grasslands that needs to be controlled. And how do we control that? We looked at some mitigation things in this morning session that the task force is going to be looking at with regards to how do we mitigate the opportunity for such a fire as we saw. So therefore, I think I will quit with that right now, and we can get into more details as we go further.
Commissioner Sellers, you have any...
As the city council will see, that us three county commissioners sometimes come from different angles, and sometimes we get to the same point, but we come from different areas. I think it's the city's determination to depend, determine how much money is spent on this project. I think it's our determination to determine how much percentage that the county wants to spend on the total project. I guess my request, and I guess it probably goes to Chief Beer or the city manager, is since this request came from Chief Beer's department and not through the city budget process, since the request is for new fire items, will the 2023 capital budget for fire equipment, which part of that is Fire District Two, be decreased if these purchases are approved and paid for by the city and the county? A different way of stating that is the chief is asking for 800, not 880, but 630 at least capital equipment to be placed into operation as soon as possible. Will that affect his budget request for 2023, for his capital budget?
It will not only affect the 2023, it'll affect all future capital lays where we had the trucks backed in, and the gear, and all the other equipment.
So following that line of request, we would expect then the 2023 capital budget to be less than the 2022 capital budget?
I couldn't say that. I don't know what my operating costs are with workers' comp, insurance.
No, I'm talking about capital expense.
Capital expenses, yeah, the brush trucks will come out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And they were in the capital budget for '23 and '24?
Yes, sir, there was one in there, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That explains that, and I think that's important, because if we spend the money now, we shouldn't have to spend it in '23 and '24 and so forth, so I appreciate that. I've got some more comments, but I think that I generally concur with our chairman's thought that normally 20% to 25% is the county's direct share for such a purchase, but since this equipment will be shared with other districts on a need basis, and you call it mutual support? Is that called mutual support or something?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, and these specialized trucks, such as we're talking about, are used mostly out in the county. I'm not opposed to a 50% split if we move towards that at this meeting.
Mayor and council, appreciate you guys letting us start first. I mean, I think we're close to a consensus on this topic. I think there's maybe some other things that we could take the opportunity to discuss. I'll stop there, and I think we could vote on it now if we wanted to, but I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to weigh in.
You know, there was some comments at your meeting about what our appropriate share was, and as far as I'm concerned, we're living up to that share that was suggested, and I don't know that that's what the contract says, but I think in this particular case, but again, I think it's the city's case to decide what equipment is necessary and what's needed, and if you feel that the chief's request for those particular trucks are in the best interest of the community, I don't think it's our point to debate whether you buy a $210,000 truck or a $160,000 truck, or a $100,000 truck. Any reaction from the city council on our position of 50-50?
I might just ask one question about this initial, that's very generous, great to hear that, but that would be for the initial outlay of funds. We have a MERC to consider, and this would be on a replacement schedule. I know you can't tie the hands of future commissions, but that is one thing I want the council to be aware of, that this is not a one-time cost, because this equipment would be in our municipal equipment replacement fund for consideration every 10 or so years, or she could comment with more expertise on the replacement schedule, but...
Well, I don't think we're making any commitment besides today, and certainly, the commission is willing to look at Fire District Two and how it's funded and so forth, but I don't think that we want to make any commitment about 10 years from now.
I might suggest that we, you know, I think we've allocated at least an hour here, so there might be some other conversations, and we can stick to, you know, the request in front of us here, and I think we're ready to get that off the table.
Well, I'm not sure that the council will be taking up this item as to how much we're going to approve at our 6:30 meeting this evening, a special meeting.
So I kind of would like to go with Sellers' said. I think that the discussion of the equipment amount and MERC amount is probably discussion that, where the city makes that decision, and they're saying the one-time purchase, 50%, is that correct?
That's correct. I just want the council to be aware that this is not a, this sounds like a one-time cost.
Yeah.
But if we want this equipment to be available into the future, which I assume will be needed, we need to consider the long-term ramifications of approving an expenditure that is going to have replacement costs.
Yes, I'm just saying that might be a discussion that we have at the 6:30. But yes, I understand that. From what I heard, I think we had one brush truck for the 2023, 2024, so we're adding two more than what we initially had.
We have two brush trucks that are 25 years old, or 20, let's say 23, they're old squads.
I should say, in the future capital, we had one brush truck.
Well, they're staggered out over years.
Yeah.
And so that's how they're, there's like one in each year of them are, and stuff like that. Is that what you're asking me?
Yes.
So we're replacing two, we're not adding more equipment to our fleet, we're replacing two of the squads that are really old.
Yeah.
And the damage one here.
So it's a net zero, and there's a track to our maintenance?
Correct.
To our maintenance, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay. Thank you.
Since we're paying right now 22%, we're looking at going more. I think we could ask this question is, where was the money spent on equipment or so forth that was brought in by the $300,000 or whatever it was that was brought in by sending the trucks to Colorado? Does any council know where that was spent at, or how it was spent? Was it reserved back to replace the trucks, or what?
That would be a question for Chief Angela Richards-Pierce, or maybe the city manager Ken Trell has some comments.
I can speak on that if you'd like.
All right. Thank you, Chief. I figured you might know.
Commissioner, there's roughly $200,000 in that account. By the time we pay back all the expenses and different things, there's about $200,000 in that account right now. That money is allocated for a replacement truck. I'm trying to fund my entire wiring program, and we'll get there out of this program. And so I hope you truly understand that. If we can take it 100% off the tax roll, but to get to where we need to be, we need to do this project here first, under my proposal. But that $200,000 is gonna go towards a Type III chassis. It's 15 months old to build, and actually, we're looking to, we've not purchased anything. We're specking that truck out right now, and so that money's allocated to that. Hopefully, we send guys out this year, we can build that pot up again with additional funding, and that'll be purchasing future brush trucks and the gear and stuff like that.
And so that's a Type III truck?
What's that?
You said it's toward building a Type III?
Yeah, a Type III would replace one of our military rigs that we have, and what we found out here is our military trucks, with all the structure protection we have, our big six-by-sixes, they don't work into going into somebody's yard. They don't have like the hoses and different things that we need to protect structures. They're good for open fields and spraying out wheat fields and perimeters like that, but these Type IIs give us the added same water capacity, but they're more versatile to allow us to protect homes in this type of environment that we face.
So why do we need a Class VI truck? I'm just curious.
Our Class VI is what everybody in the county runs. That's our bread and butter truck. That's our pickup trucks with 400 gallons of water on. That's what is truly our bread and butter units that get around with everybody. Everybody in the county runs a Type VI truck.
That's needed to go to Colorado, too.
That's the one that we make our money on when we send out to West to help other jurisdictions. That's what we make our money on. Yep. But the goal, again, is to subsidize our entire wiring program and take it off the local taxpayers through that program, and we're well on our way with that.
Randy, do you have a recommendation yet on where the $440,000, our share would come from? I know there's maybe some concerned stakeholders in here on that. Is it CIP?
To spend or to allocate this year, ARPA money would be where it would come from. We do have CIP reserve funds that probably would qualify. We could probably use some of that, but the, I guess, low-hanging fruit, the easiest part is ARPA money, but that, again, there are stakeholders in the room that have requested other items for that ARPA money.
I know the regulations on the ARPA funds have changed quite a bit even the last few weeks. Are we absolutely sure we can use it for this without repercussions?
Yes.
Well, I might give some resistance to using just ARPA money for this expense, if that's a separate meeting for today.
I'd like to prove it, so, I mean, I think the chief wants to get legal. I mean, what do we have in reserves today?
We have over a million dollars. I mean, we can afford reserves, but we can't afford ARPA, but that does take away from other projects or other, you know, that are being considered for those two sets of money.
Do we have to decide where it's allocated today? Can we approve the 440 match and allow them to go back and decide whether it's 880 or whatever it is? I'd be ready to make that motion.
I would not, I would not be in favor of that motion right now, because we don't have any specs. Here's this Class VI truck for $195,000. I'm just not ready to commit right now to something except splitting cost on, okay? And I know you're specs, and I've got specs, and you're the expert, I'm not, so you just have to pardon my research, but I believe in doing some research on this and paving way with bunker gear for firefighting.
Well, can I speak on that? I don't think it's needed.
Okay.
Commissioner Hurst, I think you're in the minority here on that. I heard Commissioner Sellers indicate that he wanted to give the city administration that authority to make the decisions on the particular purchases, so can we, can we? So what I'm gonna do, just to keep this moving, so they can do their part, is I'm gonna make a motion to approve the fire chief's request and match that at 50%, up to $440,000, and allow the county administrator to get back to us on how he wants to allocate where that money comes from. Is there a second?
Well, I would second that if you allow additional discussion.
Sure, let's get through this. I appreciate the city's patience here.
It's only $440,000, so...
I understand, but there are guests here, and I, but I think it's important to give you what we want to do back, so you can get your issue done tonight, so there's a motion and a second, Commissioner Sellers.
Okay. Here's where I'm feeling on this. I listened to the city council meeting, and it was suggested that this county step up to do more than we have to under the District Two fire contract. We're doing that. However, I feel strongly, but before I vote on this expense, using either general budget or ARPA funds, and that all will discuss between the county, and to cooperate the way the city wants us to, we need the city staff and the city council's assurance that city council issues will be handled in a professional, fair, and timely manner, and I don't think that's happening at this point. And this is a city-county issue, and you want us to cooperate, and I'm willing to do that, but I want to go back to what happened in January. At the January 11th meeting of the county commission, we asked the chair of our commission to meet with the mayor, the city manager, and county administrator to get the process moving in a fair way for all concerned on the city-county contracts that need to be renegotiated and renewed. That meeting was held among those four people on January 14th. It's my understanding that city manager Jeff Cantrell removed himself early from the meeting that was scheduled to go an hour long without arranging for any subsequent meetings of this group. In my opinion, the city manager has no desire to coordinate with the county and provide the city council any city-county contracts that are fair to both parties. It is of note that the city and county, we share 60-some percent of the same population, so we're talking about the same people paying these same tax dollars. To me, until the city council members assure us that cooperation will occur, I'm not gonna vote for these fire funds. If the city council directs the city manager to work as part of a team to get these past-due contracts updated fairly for all parties, I'll vote to authorize the requested funds. I'd like to hear thoughts from Chairman Friesen, Mayor Pyrrhus DiCarvello, county administrator Partington, and the city manager about why that meeting was adjourned without future meetings on these contracts to be scheduled. These contracts are old, they need to be renegotiated fairly to each party, and it's not happening, and I'm not gonna cooperate with the city until we get cooperation on these contracts.
Okay, well, I'm gonna declare the motion's failed based on that, just so we have the procedural issue done here, and we can come back to that. I think there were some questions asked. Mayor, I'll defer to you on whether you want to start. I'm happy to speak to the meeting.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner, and if you have additional comments, Chairman, I'd like to hear them, but I can't speak for the council as a whole, interested in hearing their feedback, but I personally am strongly committed to a strong partnership with the county. I think it's imperative to the growth and success of our community, and would like to do anything to facilitate further negotiation of those contracts. Agree 100% with you that we need to resolve that issue, and there are multiple contracts at play here. I don't like that it is holding up action on this particular item, but if that's what's necessary, then I'm in favor of that, but additional questions or comments from the council?
I'm asking for assurance from the five of you that we're gonna get busy on these contracts that are outstanding, have parties sit down at the table, and work something out that's fair to the city and county. So all we're wanting is a fair contract, and we can't get to that point.
I agree with you. I think that we definitely need to start. As a council, we're trying to get a lot of stuff done this year, so I know that we personally have stacked a lot onto our city managers. I don't know if you guys have seen the 16 different meetings, because we have a lot of internal stuff that we're trying to figure out, too, but I'm not gonna use that as an excuse. We will fit it in with our other meetings right now that we're having, because there's a lot of issues that need to be resolved, right? And there's a lot of funding, we have ARPA, and we have other, we have things that we're trying to get situated as far as looking at our internal structure with our public works and other cost-saving things, so we're really trying to be accountable to the taxpayer right now, and we're working probably more than we've worked as a council in a long time. So you're gonna see some changes, and we'll definitely, I personally will work that in, too. We're trying to be very proactive and accountable to our taxpayers right now, and we are working through a lot of, a lot of, a lot of meetings and extra work that I think wasn't done for a long time, right? So as far as being more proactive on where the future goes, and I think that includes our relationship with the county, so I do think we need to make sure that our contracts are fair for both the city and the county, and I would say, just for me, yes, we will work on that. I'm sure there's enough consensus up here that we will have a discussion with the city manager and find out exactly why, what's been halting those, and see if we can't come up with some more meetings.
Since you're having a meeting at 6 o'clock tonight, maybe you could discuss the situation and see what's been holding us up?
I'd be in favor of that, because a big priority in regards to accountability to the taxpayer is making sure that we don't have duplication of services by creating silos between the two local governments. We've always worked strongly and closely together, that is, in a world of, you know, limited resources, very important, so we can absolutely throw that on the agenda this evening. throw that on the agenda this evening. Thoughts from other council members?
I think that we will get it worked out, Commissioner Sellers. We want to work together with you. We've been that way for years. So as far as I'm concerned, we'll get it worked out. And we'll talk about it tonight and we'll get it worked out. So we have a good relationship between you and us.
Steve, you were on the past commission.
Yes, sir.
Do you acknowledge that these things have been lagging and haven't happened?
Well, yes, I do. There's some things we got to get done and get fixed. So, yes.
Then we've got a meeting on the 29th. Depending on what they say at their meeting tonight, couldn't we approve our funds on the 29th for the chair?
I'd give Randy enough time.
I, I think some more council members want to speak. I don't know if they can get you in position to vote yes.
I will just say, Commissioner Sellers and Dan. I, I value relationships in general. I built the business. That's how I intend to be as a city commissioner. So you have my word, all three of you. And, I mean, it's important and it's been something that has been talked about over and over again, and I want to see improvements in that area. And I've talked to several people about, hopefully they can value relationships more than they have in the past.
Non, any comments?
We're going to work with you guys, even if we have respectful sticking points on contracts. Let's make sure that's as hard as it gets. It's respectful sticking points, but we're part of the county.
Well, and I think, I think that you folks represent the city of Hutchinson. I'm District One of the, of, which includes most of the city of Hutchinson. The city of Hutchinson is 64%, correct? Something close to that, of the county tax funds that are, are paid. And it's over 64% of the taxing authority. We've got to work closely together and do what's right for the city and the county because it's the same people. And that hasn't happened in the last three years that I've been on this commission.
Commissioner, I would, I do want to, I, I do want to say that I don't think any lack of movement on contracts is representative of wishes of this body. I don't, I don't know where that's coming from. Maybe administration can speak to that because that, that may be a unilateral decision that does not involve us. We have always spoken to the need to work closely with the county. We do not want splitting of departments that have always worked together.
Jade, you, as being on the commission as long as you've been on, know that these contracts have not been updated when they're due. You, you, you're aware of that.
But we've also had an agreement, a longstanding agreement, that things will progress as they have regardless of whether or not the contracts are signed on the dotted line by the deadline. And I'm not seeing, I'm, I'm seeing apprehension that that isn't happening now. Is, is that where this concern is coming from?
No, I don't. I think we've actually experienced what you said of like, hey, this is a good faith agreement. We'll work together. And then all of a sudden, there is a, I got you a deadline and, and, you know, the gun range was a great example of like, that was a deadline legal maneuver. It was not the two parties coming together. So there's, we, we want good faith, trust between the two agencies. That's all we're looking for. And, and that has degraded to a level that's, that's, I think, in my opinion, unacceptable. And there is an expectation that we have of Randy. And if, if you feel like he isn't doing his part in working with, with your city manager, we need to know about it. But generally speaking, we shouldn't even be here today with these issues. They should be handled by administration. So I think there, there are some failures that we need to determine where they are and, and address them. And I appreciate, like, it seems like we're on the same page. Like, so we need to make sure the staff is, as well. I think that's the point Commissioner Sellers is trying to make here. And, and we've certainly identified some, some challenges.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I get an opportunity to respond if that's okay? Appreciate you, Mr. Sellers, suggesting that I would have that opportunity. Of the people that were at that last meeting, and I don't know how that was related to Commissioner Sellers, but I felt that it was a cordial meeting. I thought that the dialogue was constructive for us to figure something out. There were a lot of unknowns to us at the time of the meeting and certainly even after. I don't have exclusive veto power over any contracts that are between the city and the county. I can't stand alone, even if I don't like a contract or the terms of it, and install that contract out or take exclusive action to remedy it outside of what my governing body directs me to do. I will admit, we have in the past had these very frustrating issues that do go all the way back to the gun range. And unfortunately, most of these issues are small, but they've had a very large dialogue and seem to be, I, I don't believe that they're really causal in any of the other issues that we deal with. I know you guys have had changeover in the legal department. I believe that legal staff has made the, the communications for those discussions to go on. So to a large degree, and I think even historically, those contracts probably weren't negotiated by your former city or county administrator, excuse me. That was largely handled by legal. And so when Joe left, I think that might have disrupted things for a short period of time, not an unreasonable period of time. But I think at all times, I don't remember Randy ever reached out to me saying, hey, we've got a disruption of services or what are we going to do about this or, or void of contract. We, we honor everything that we have written down in the former contracts. And there is one area, I, I'm kind of hearing it, maybe it alludes to some of the issues going on with the sheriff and the jail. And the city does have an opportunity to have a potential savings of upwards of $300,000 a year in how we handle those prisoners in the future. And any disruption of services that we experienced as a whole collectively, I think the bigger burden of that fell upon the city. We're not mad about it. We resolved it. We're, we're going forward. But my obligation and duty as a city manager is to allow my governing body to understand where some of these savings may set. Politically, it would be disastrous. And we don't want that. I don't want that. I want Randy and I to be able to work that out. But largely, those issues are out of our control statutorily. I can't touch that. Randy can't either. And so I'm not trying to throw stones, but I'd like the public and people in this room to have a better understanding that I'm not the czar of the city and have exclusive control over contracts. It, it takes multiple people in the room. And I think the last conversations we've had have been constructive. I, I respect that you weren't there, Mr. Sellers, but it, it may be that, maybe next time we have a meeting, you are there.
The makeup of the county commission doesn't allow more than one of us to be at those meetings. And my point is that it was on January 14th. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been any action on these things since that date. Well, we're two, two, over two months later. It just, government's got to work. It just can't sit on its ass. Excuse that language. But that's, that's the way I feel. But we've got to get back, and, and I think I've heard from you, what I want to hear from the commission is that we're going to work together, particularly the way, particularly the way Sarah put it. I appreciate you saying it that way, Sarah.
I, I want like, I, I want, I need to address, like, Mr. Cantrell, like, you did leave 30 minutes into a meeting abruptly on a very important topic for us. There has been multiple times where, you know, we've, I've relayed to multiple council members, like, hey, what is the status on contracts? And they say it's completely in your hands and they have no awareness of what's going on. So I, I don't, I don't agree with what you said there. And, and so you guys will have to figure that out. But I, I, I think you have not been informing council enough on what's going on with contracts between us. And, and we're trying to do that this way through them, and that's not very effective in how.
I agree. It's a subversal process. And I, and I would, I would disagree with you wholeheartedly.
I, I would like to comment that when it came to the jail, we were notified as a city council member. And we were aware of the disputes that had happened. And, but as a council, we, we heard about it. And, you know, the, me personally, I was displeased with the actions that had occurred towards the city. But that doesn't mean we can't work. We still need to work together, even if we're displeased or not. The conversation still needs to happen. And I think that is what I'm for. I mean, we, we need to have uncomfortable conversations so that we can move forward, but we still need to have the conversations. And so, yes, we were displeased. It, it wasn't good for the city. And it went, and, and we were informed as city council. And we instructed the city manager accordingly. And, and he did what, what?
I would say we were informed of the change in the sheriff's desire to provide transport service. And the city manager put forth a recommendation to try to negotiate a per diem at the jail. I've never been in favor of that because the community spoke loud and clear that they wanted to fund this through a referendum. And let's be honest, the costs at the jail don't go down if we move our prisoners out of county. So is the city saving money? Okay, the city's saving money. And then 64% of the taxpayers in the county get higher taxes to now fund what we were funding jointly. We need to work together. I'm not in favor of sending our prisoners out of county. I think that the contract has languished because perhaps the council hasn't been loud enough about their direction to the city manager. I'm not sure if that's something that should be discussed today, but it's on the table. I don't want to send our prisoners out of county and cause additional costs to the county that will be picked up two-thirds by the city taxpayers.
Jade, I would say that when people don't get along, it costs the taxpayers money.
Exactly.
And maybe that's stating the obvious, but I will do my best to try to make people get along and to do the right thing. And to your point, Jade, we can, why would we send our prisoners elsewhere and then pay for a jail as a county taxpayer?
Because the county sheriff decided to stop transporting for us.
And, and I understand there's different caveats.
Let's just put it out there. We're all going to sit here and put it out there.
Well, we renegotiate a contract to eliminate costs associated with transport and still have a good relationship with the county sheriff, who I think is a highly, highly passionate and capable and good man.
I agree. I know we can do that. I know we can do that.
I think that's an example of a position or a process that we've always done that for one means or another was abruptly put on the city's doorstep.
If I may say something.
Yeah.
One of the positive things that came out of our last meeting that we had here in this office, in this room, was when we were informed unilaterally that the city had spent a lot of money on 911, when we had a process in place and the county was never advised of that unilateral exchange. One of the positive things that came out of that notice was the meeting that Patrick attended. Did you attend?
No.
But, but Randy attended, that now we've come to the understanding that we need to be notified of these meetings. And there's, there's a procedure taking place. You brought up that subject. And so I think that's one of the positive things that came out of that, that discussion regarding not to be unilaterally when you can't be as statute, I don't know what statute or not, but it was an agreement. So I think that's one of the positive things.
And I, I know you're all aware of the, the difference in, in authorities. You know, you, you can direct the city manager and, and he can direct the, the department chief, police chief. You know, our, our sheriff is elected and he has independent authority to, to make certain decisions. And so, you know, I would encourage you to, to reach out and talk to the sheriff and, and get an explanation for yourself as to why he made some of those changes. I know that they caused some challenges with the city, but I don't think they were, they were done arbitrarily either. So we can't speak for the sheriff, nor can we tell him what to do. And it's just a dynamic we have. So I, I want, I want you to be aware that he, he is more than happy, I know, to communicate to you directly on his, his thoughts to, to any citizen, really, I'm sure. So how about, how about we bring that motion back up and get it, get it sent, sent off to them? And as a good faith gesture here, did you get movement that you were looking for today, Commissioner?
I'll look for it.
Okay. So Cindy, Cindy, would you, do you have that motion?
I didn't, I didn't write it.
I'll make the motion again.
You're going to approve 440?
To approve the fire chief's request for up to 50%, a maximum of 440, a match to, to, to the city's, to the fire chief's request, up to 440 or 50%. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I feel like we've had plenty of discussion on this item. Is there, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, Cindy, real quick, please.
Mr. Hirst?
No, because of the cost.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
We will communicate back to you after this evening's meeting what we decide. And I do encourage you, Commissioner Hirst, to send the information you have, based on your research, to the council for consideration.
We'll get together and talk with Chief Bear because I admire Chief Bear as a fire department.
What I'm hearing from the commission is the need for greater communication. And I would pose that perhaps there has been an end run around traditional budget processes that, that is not included, the county. And you would prefer that not be done in the, in the future, specifically the dispatch console. So I know that was an item of contention. It's something I brought up during the budgeting process as well. But I want the support on the council to, to veto it. So I think city staff certainly has direction that greater communication is needed, both to the city council and between the city and the county.
I didn't give Randy a chance to talk. He's been very patient. I don't know if you, you had anything to add, Randy?
Well, going back to that, the issue, and you talked about the meeting, not going to get into specifics of the meeting, but the, I guess the one thing from the county's perspective is we're not from staff. I'm not sure what the city is wanting on these agreements. We had, on some of the small agreements that Joe of Sullivan had sent up to Paul last summer were relatively minor. There were some that were bigger, of course, than the sheriff's. That issue kind of made us confront it right away, that issue. Whatever happened at, you know, whatever your decision was, that's independent. But I just want to relay that after the meeting. Jeff did send an email asking for position on the per diem. I replied back that the county's not interested. So it's kind of at that point of we don't know what else we need to do or what is expecting from the county.
Can you outline which contracts are in flux? There's four or five.
There's, yeah, there's a good number, but there's, there's one about the, it was the old law enforcement center agreement. But then a few years, a couple of years ago, a new law enforcement center agreement was put in place when the city police renovated the law enforcement center. So there's portions of the old one that need to be changed. They talked about the joint drug task force, the, talked about the law enforcement center, the transport. So that's one agreement. There's an agreement on, well, I guess the shooting reigns out, but that one's kind of gone now. And then the other one I can remember. And then the other one I can remember is dispatch, just that we needed to look at modifications to the dispatch.
There's also the IT agreement.
The IT related to law enforcement, yes. So I think those were the three.
Those are the main three.
And, yeah, so I would kind of put it out there as the city may want to look at saving money on the jail. Obviously, it's not a good, may not be the best political, but dispatch, I would just throw it out. Dispatch is kind of the same thing. The county pays for 50% of dispatch when we have less than 50% of the calls. So just kind of.
I'm interested in getting those contracts resolved as quickly as possible. Do you think that that would require an additional meeting with the chief and sheriff? Or is that something that can be resolved between the two administrators?
My opinion with Paul, Jeff, Patrick, myself, we could probably change, bring forth a proposal unless the city is wanting major overhauls in one of the contracts.
Well, because the commission acted in good faith with a vote to approve 50% of the expenditures for the fire chief's requests, I would propose that the council acts in good faith by setting a deadline for contract proposals to be set forth for our approval. Thoughts?
I think that's a good idea. But you're going to make that deadline tonight, probably?
Well, no, I think we.
Getting stuff done.
They're not that good.
You're missing more work, don't you, Steve?
What would the commission like to see?
I think what Councilman Garza meant is you guys would decide tonight what's the deadline.
That's what I meant.
I think we're, I think the important part is a deadline, not necessarily when. And I think we would appreciate that.
And since we've had a very call a spade a spade meeting, and I appreciate your discussion, and our discussion is that in particular dispatch needs some effort.
I was going to bring that up too, Ron. I don't know if there's any consensus in the room about possibly making that its own board or whatever, not having it necessarily under the city. It's a very large discussion. I don't know that I want to open that can of worms, but I'm just throwing it out there. There just seems to be a whole lot of things that involve officer safety and things going on in dispatch.
I think it's a bigger thing, Commissioner Fast, than we can decide today.
Certainly.
But it's such an important aspect of how the fire chief does his job, how the sheriff does his job, how the police department does their job, and how citizens communicate with dispatch for fire permits. It's an important aspect of our community. And, you know, to be blunt, I just cannot understand why we ordered nine consoles, but we did, and it's there. So that's why we need to better communicate in the future. And I think I'm hearing from you that we're going to get that cooperation and communication. And thank you for all the comments.
Councilman Fast, you were, are you wanting a different, there is a committee today, and you want something different than that?
Well, I'm just wondering if it might be better if an independent agency runs our dispatch so that everybody feels like they're getting, I don't know how we improve our dispatch service. Maybe you could speak to that, Jeff. It's done a lot of different ways. I know the chief is familiar with that type of operation. And to be honest, I don't think he'd have any hurt feelings of not having to manage that on a daily basis. And I think for all participants in the room, it might be felt that there'd be greater buy-in on that. I look back at some of the history on the decisions made on the dispatch design, because I wasn't here during that, but I wanted to understand the frustrations with it. And the prior conversations did take place. It's just that nobody remains on staff that recalls those discussions. They're reflected in the minutes of the 911 committee. But that might bring better continuity back in. I'd certainly want to talk to some of our staff to get a better feel, but I don't think it's a terrible idea, sir.
I would like to get a feel from the councilors who are both here today as to what you feel is a viable deadline for reconsideration of drafting contracts.
I've never felt more like the new guy.
Trial by fire.
No, and, you know, I guess, I think some of the frustration maybe, or for lack of a better term, boiling out is just the lack of engagement. So I'm, I just, the way I view it, I worry a little bit about a deadline because that can create other problems that are unintended, sometimes with the deadline to complete everything. I think, just from my thought, like, I'm just eager to, being new to the situation, I'm just eager to get engaged and start working on these. And if it takes us, it might take us one afternoon that we get it all done, or it may take us a very, a series of 10 meetings to get these things all wrapped up. I don't really know how long that will take to happen, but as long as once it starts, it doesn't stop, that's my perspective.
Maybe the term is a priority rather than a deadline. It needs to be a priority with some kind of updates on a regular basis.
I think a three-month deadline would be a good target to shoot at.
Yeah, we agree with that.
I mean, if you don't make it, you come back and ask for an extension. But what do you, what do you think of that?
We'll be down way before.
Yeah, there you go.
One hour meeting.
Bam.
You need the dirty laundry?
Well, I wanted to thank the city council and the city staff and the public for being here in this joint meeting. We probably should do this more often.
I think we have to because only if you face each other can you really understand each other and your feelings and our feelings. I certainly think it needs to be done quarterly, no matter who's elected and who's on what group. And next year, there'll be five county commissioners for you to meet with, so it'll be even then.
I know that we've been working on study sessions for particular items so that we can dive into them at a more critical level so that we can get a better understanding when we make any important decisions. So I would say we're going to meet quarterly. I would like it to be on a study session basis where there might be a particular subject that could be put on agenda item that we dive into in a more elaborate and detailed discussion, where it's information that's presented or maybe we're not getting along on something. But I would like it to be more of an interactive study session that has particular subjects. And maybe as it goes on and our relationship grows stronger, we won't have such contentious ones on the board. But, you know, sometimes we need to have those difficult conversations. So I wouldn't mind it to be a study session between us about any contentious problems that might be problematic that we can just hash it out.
I think your point's well made. Why don't the mayor and the chairman of the commission, before those meetings, kind of decide an agenda that.
I would propose that our next one could be about contracts. We're talking about three months.
We would love to come to the city.
For lunch.
No wonder you're so grumpy, Ron. Golly, you're hangry.
Well, unless there's final comments, if you agree, mayor, I'd call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.